Good evening. Welcome to the February 7th meeting of the Newmarket Town Council. We'll begin with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the Filing of the United States of America into the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Amy Burns is calling in tonight. She's away on business, but is calling in remotely. And I just want to ask her if...
Counselors, before you say, you need to turn your mics on?
Oh, okay. Thank you. Just wanted to confirm with Counselor Burns that it was not practical for her to be here in person and that she is alone in the location she is now.
That's correct.
Thank you very much. And at this point, we will open public forum. All comments should be addressed to the Chair and no one should speak longer than five minutes. We open public forum at 7:02. Seeing nobody at the microphone, we close public forum. At this point, I would accept a motion to approve the minutes of the January 17th regular meeting, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the January 17th, 2017-18 regular meeting. Second.
Any corrections or any comments on the minutes? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Counselor Burns.
Steve?
Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero to one.
And along the same lines, I would now accept a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes from the January 17th non-public meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the non-public January 17th, 2018 meeting.
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Counselor Burns.
Steve?
Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero to one.
And have the report of the Town Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item on my written report is that we received our Department of Revenue Administration's sales ratio survey. What this is, is they review all of our assessing records and determine what our valuation of the town is. You want to be between ninety and one-hundred-and-ten percent of value. Currently, we are at eighty-point-five percent. In comparison, five years ago, when we did our last statistical update, we were at one-hundred-and-ten percent after, just to show you what the market is doing. So basically, what we're saying is that the value of the town at $750 million is approximately an eighty percent valuation. So the good thing is that we'll be, next year, we'll be conducting another statistical update, so the values of the properties will be going up, which in return means tax rate drops, but values go up, so they may have, some people may have more bills, choosing a third, a third, and a third, third see it low, third see it stay the same, and a third see it go up. So I just wanted to get the information to the council. Next, starting on February 14th, for a period of about three weeks, we'll have a contractor coming in to do renovations in town council chambers. During this period, the council, the chamber will be unavailable for meetings due to the complexity of the project and the scope of work. The majority of the work will be contained in the chamber with one exception, which is the installation of a second doorway. All meetings that earn that time will be in the auditorium or the Beach Street Extension Senior Center.
I think you said the 14th?
Nineteenth.
You meant the 19th.
Yes. Yeah, the 19th. And finally, in my written report, we received notice from the Town Attorney that the New Hampshire Department of Transportation wished to close the case regarding repayment of funds for the Route 108 bike lane project. This, in effect, closes the case and the town has won. So we will not be paying any funds for that Route 108 bike widening project on the south end. That's all I have tonight, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on the report of the Town Administrator?
I'm just going to say, I'm so glad we pushed back on that. That was a little hairy for the council at the time, whether that was all of us. Was that this council that did that? Has it been going on, or was it the previous?
I think it was a previous.
And I'm really glad we pushed back. It was a precarious position a lot of counselors felt, and we just said, well, nothing to lose at this point.
Right.
Everything to gain, that's good. Glad it's done.
Yeah, I mean, along those lines, I certainly think the day will come when we want to see a bike path.
Right.
What happened north of...
Right, that wasn't the issue. It was...
But it was not a, when you look at the money that's been expended to widen 108 north of Newmarket, between Newmarket and Durham, what that, what that project really needs to look like to adequately do the job. The idea that we were going to self-manage a small, you know, it just wasn't practical.
And they have to pay something. I mean, that was the whole, the whole point. It has been widened, it's being widened anyway. The state has the money, and all of a sudden, the town is going to be out X hundred thousand dollars, or, you know, at a minimum, what we went to court for, so.
Whatever it was, it wasn't a good idea. Okay. Any committee reports?
Yes, I'll report on the Plating Board, which was held last night. They had a couple of workshops. One was on zoning reg regulation. Let me get the right wording here. Lost my notes. It was in regard, zoning reg changes, they're looking to just clarify when impact fees can be waived for the accessory dwelling units, just to make that more clear.
Sounds like it's a hot topic if you look at the agendas for the Plating Board.
Yeah, but they're getting there. They're getting there, so. The other workshop was on stormwater regulations. There was a subcommittee that pulled together revised regulations, and those were reviewed last night by the board, or by the Plating Board. There was a question raised about the MS4 permit, just to make sure, they wanted to make sure that what they're doing with the regulations is going to be aligned, especially in light of the ongoing lawsuit. So I didn't know if there was anything we could communicate back to them on that.
I discussed it with the Community Development Director today, and we'll be aligned.
Okay.
So we're fine.
All right.
Counsel Finch?
Quick report on Conservation Commission. We met February 8th last Thursday. And just a couple things to note, we had a couple wetlands permit applications come to us, just requesting us sign off for them to expedite the process. One of them was for the crossings at Sleepy Hollow off New Road to kind of rebuild the ground around a sewage line, just to shore that up, to protect that. So that's to get repaired to prevent any damage or leakage, so that's in the works. And then the other one was for just a private home, looking to put a dock out into the water. And the nice thing about both of them is that they're pretty clear-cut, and the dock going out into the water was actually, the company that designed it avoided taking out any trees, they kind of zigzagged the woods, very minimal impact, so it was kind of cool to see that they designed to not really impact the environment too much. Piscassic Loisel, we approved the sign. That's going to be printed in the next couple of weeks and go up finally. So a nice sign that's going to be kind of weather-coated and show the trails. We talked about the process of putting in RFP to look at Shanda Park regarding the erosion around the edges, because it's pretty significant, so we just wanted to see what, to get some ideas for what the cost for repairs of that might be. And other than that, we just had some easement monitoring reports, but nothing, nothing has changed with those locations for the conservation land, so that is almost it. Also, there was a question about the LED lighting that went up in town, about the impact it could have on the environment. So our Town Administrator gave some information that the light output's the same, it's just a different type of light, far more efficient, more directed as opposed to kind of flooding the night sky, so hopefully those concerns are allayed with that information.
I was going to report back to the council in the next meeting on that, so you guys could have the information as well, because I know there's been a lot of...
Not a lot, but...
We've had some comments that it's been, it's brighter, which is, yes, it is, it seems brighter in the downtown because of the colored light. It's not orange, it's blue. It's blue-white, so it makes it brighter, and it is for safety reasons there, as well as other areas. But I'm going to provide that to the entire council for next week. And that's all I have.
Counselor Thompson?
Go ahead, Tony. As long as I just lost what I was, it's a question for you. It's a question for you. Go ahead.
We have committee reports, so do you want to...
Yeah, no, go ahead. I'll come back to it. Sorry.
Okay. So I have two committee reports. So the first is the Budget Committee met last week just to discuss the changes that were made at the deliberative session to the school budget, and those were recommended unanimously. So that's all we have from the Budget Committee. And then the Energy and Environment Advisory Committee met twice since our last meeting. And there's still, I mean, I would say that it's still a committee that's sort of getting its feet under itself. So we're working on things like getting a page on the website, which we did. Working on, we've outreach, we did some outreach to other area committees, including Durham, and met with the chairperson of the Durham Energy Committee. We've had conversations about multiple ideas, including car charging stations for electric cars, a swap shop. We've talked at length about a clothing and book drop box and getting something like that in the area. We've also talked, you know, we're also developing a mission statement, and so there's some just procedural things that we're trying to work out, as well as, you know, work on these bigger ideas. So composting is probably the highlight, I think, of the committee at the moment. Solar is also really, something that people are very interested in, and we're just going to, waiting on the study that we're doing here in town before the committee can really do anything, right? So that's it.
Counselor Thompson, have you remembered yet?
The wetlands permits, the lights.
Something that you talked about, and I don't, I don't, it's awful. I'm so sorry.
Well, that's okay. We've got a little more time.
You talked about the permits, you talked about the Loisel sign.
Yep.
You talked about the lighting, you talked about the sewer pipe at Sleepy Hollow.
The easement monitoring.
Yeah.
Listen to the lights.
Did I miss anything, babe?
No, I think that's everything I mentioned.
You weren't paying attention.
Yeah.
I got all of that, and then something popped into my head. I don't know if it was the lighting, I don't know. I don't know. I think about, oh...
It's not really a committee report, because we didn't meet, but I was, I would just mention at this time that the dam committee is having a meeting tomorrow.
I know what it was.
Oh, good.
I know what it was. I did miss one thing. Sorry.
Yeah, I just mentioned that, where we've got a meeting tomorrow, and so we're, you know, continuing the process of getting ready, working again, as was discussed before, towards being, having something to, you know, present to the public, have a public hearing in the spring, and working towards some kind of vote next year. Go ahead.
Third time's the charm. The erosion at Shanda Park. That's what it was. How long ago was that all done, I suppose? Does anybody have, I mean, ages and ages and ages ago?
Yeah.
We just hadn't improved the park, but I believe that little place where it's a problem was already existing.
I assume so, yeah.
And one, there's a few different areas, too, where Moonlight Brook comes in.
Yeah.
It's kind of eroding underneath the trees on the side, over towards the private property, and most of the, where the riprap is, some of the rocks have already fallen in, so it's pretty significant.
Right, so if you're in the big circle, like where we have the Dan Consets and stuff like that, and you look out through, and there's that bit that comes in, and the rocks are gone, and the things. So I understand it's not like, oh, I don't know, Main Street where we can go back to a contractor. And it is a natural occurrence, but is there any insurance coverage for anything like that?
No.
Or unless it's a natural disaster?
And that would only come through FEMA, wouldn't even, our own insurance carrier wouldn't cover that, so.
All right, that's what I thought that was.
It's the bad, it's the, it's the one thing about having a park on the water, you're always going to have to be filling it in with sand and fixing it again.
And it is, that does come with facilities, I mean, it's one of the facilities and the parks and everything that we have to some extent, so I understand that.
And I actually want to clarify something on that. We do not actually, the town has no oversight on that. We have to go to the Conservation Commission.
Right, right.
Because they have the authority over that park.
Right, but the town owns it.
It's in the Conservation Commission's name, right. But they have to say, for example, I can't, I cannot go out and hire an engineer to study this as the Town Administrator. I could do it for other parks, but I can't for this one, because it's a conservation land.
Right, okay. That was kind of my question, because I did notice how bad that is, and, I mean, again, it happens, it's nature, it's whatever, but I don't know.
Well, and we did a site walk last summer, and two weeks later, there was a rock that was half my size that had fallen in between visits, so it's, you can see it.
Yes, I mean, they're right after that. It's not like, okay, all right.
I'll just note, folks who go down to the riverfront, I mean, I live above it, they like to throw rocks in. The kids do.
Yeah, and the retaining wall by the, not retaining wall, the wall by the boat ramp on the right going to the water, that's starting to sink because of rocks being removed.
From my one-year stint as the Town Council Representative to the Conservation Committee, there were people who were quite concerned about ducks there, because they would eat the vegetation of those retaining areas, which, you know, anything you do...
Removing rocks is more of a structural thing, you know.
Yeah, but banks are held by vegetation, and if you remove the vegetation, you know, it's...
Right, right.
And so there were a lot, it has been hard to get enforcement of the "don't feed the duck" rules.
They don't listen.
It's a tough one. The ducks don't read.
The ducks don't read, but the people that are feeding them should.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess the hope is to save the park and find out what can be done with it, for maybe even some of the stuff that's been lost, but I guess that's the hope, is to find some way to shore it up on the edge.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Moving along to second reading ordinances and resolutions. Resolution 2017-18-28. Do I read just the title?
Just the title.
Authorizing the Town Administrator to enter into an agreement with Siemens Industries Incorporated for HVAC services for town facilities. And I'd accept a motion to approve Resolution 1718-28.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 1718-28. Second.
It's pretty self-explanatory. We went out to bid for our HVAC services, received three proposals, one from Siemens for, including, if, if combined with the school, for $27,564.25. Thermodynamics for $7,860, and M2 services of Exeter-Hampshire, $8,990.01. We reviewed the thermodynamics one, because it was such an outlier, and we do not believe that it's comprehensive enough to, and also covers everything that we need. There's a lot of additional costs that they're not including in their proposal that the other two companies are. So it'd be just basically, this is their base fee plus other work. That's why there's such a difference between the two, the three, sorry. Am I missing anything, or?
I think you nailed it. Counselor Bowden?
Question regards, or a couple questions, I guess. What were they missing in, it said it wasn't comprehensive enough as far as their response? What exactly?
I did call them, and they did say, well, we're going to do everything, but we make up the differences in repairs to your equipment and work that we do to fix things that are broken, which, if you do preventive maintenance, you don't have the breakdowns. That was number one. And then, in speaking with the owner again, some of the filter changes which are required didn't get covered to the extent that we had. His answer was that, we don't do it that way, and so we didn't quite, we looked at how we've been doing it in the past. And wasn't, wasn't sufficient answer for us in this case, because there's quite a few pieces of equipment. We did list them out, and then there's 29 different heating systems. And if you want to kind of equate it to your own home heating system, what it costs to get that cleaned every year, now times that type of 29, what do you get? So there has, there is and has to be a lot of pieces that are not taken care of and missed through that type, since both the other two contractors were $24 apart in their initial base bids. So that's what we discussed with that contractor.
Counselor Thompson?
In the Siemens quote, and I hear you on the thermodynamics, and that there have been performance issues, and I just heard, you know, your explanation of what does it take to maintain 29 pieces of equipment, times whatever it is you're first clean out, and all of that, depending on the size of the equipment. Now, I pay, you know, 150 bucks a year for mine, so times 29, it's not that much. So I guess I'm at the point where, A, if thermodynamics comes in at 7,800, and just for round numbers, Siemens comes in at 20 grand more, is there any benefit to going to thermodynamics, because do we think we're going to spend more than 20 grand fixing what they miss?
In the long run, we certainly will.
We have been.
We already are.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And then with the Siemens proposal, just for everyone's, I'm going to use a familiar term, for everyone's identification, you weren't here for some of that one. What's not included with Siemens? If, I mean, they're going to do PMs, they're going to do all of that. If we need a filter, is that in this price? If we need a something, are we going to get, every time they need a part to fix something as part of their PM, are we going to get a bill?
No, if you actually look, I included the written RFP.
I did, I just wanted to know.
You see, it's pretty extensive what they have to cover in that, and they have to cover it as well as the other two contractors. If there is a broken device, that's not a preventive maintenance that they, that they find during their preventive maintenance, they have to notify us in writing and give us a cost to replace it or repair it, depending on which it is. I know we've been using them for the school, I have pretty good working relation with them prior. They're not the type of company that turns around and says, here's a bill for this, and here's a bill for this, and here's a bill for this. They take very good care of the equipment.
Or the contractor's reputation-wise, sometimes you go, okay, no, everything's included, but everything is an exception.
Yeah, there's never an everything.
I don't want us to deal with that.
We wouldn't want to pay for the everything contract.
Okay.
That, because they have to cover any potential anything, and you'd be hundreds of thousands of dollars for the potential.
So if I'm correct in understanding, it's more like, you know, auto warranties are different. So if you buy, I'm just not even going to, if you buy brand X, and you get a 50,000-mile warranty, but it's not entirely bumper-to-bumper, and anything wear and tear, and brake pads and whatever, you've got to still pay extra. Versus if you buy the car that I have now, sure, I pay extra for the car, but you know what, I don't pay for a thing for 100,000, including oil.
Right, I mean, in our case...
So that's kind of what I'm trying to align it to some of that.
Yeah, our preventive maintenance, which are filters, regular consumable items that go into the regular maintenance, the air filters, the oil nozzles, the strainers, the belts, all of those items are included in this contract.
Okay.
But if they come in and they find a compressor or motor failed, that compressor or motor will not be covered in the contract, because it's not part of, it's not a preventive maintenance item. They find it in the preventive maintenance, and I, but we have to pay...
Unless the part is under warranty.
That's, that's a whole different...
And then the labor would be different.
Yep, yep.
Flip it from going, using your car and think of your health insurance. Your physicals and the preventative things are covered, but if you have to go in for major surgery, that's a different kind of insurance that you have to have kick in.
I like the car now. It's still mechanical.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Cast?
I know the estimate, or the figures provided are per year, but I was trying to find, what is the length of the agreement?
This agreement's for three years.
For three years, okay, thank you.
And as any of these agreements, we also have clauses in there that say, we can give you a 30-day written notice cancellation. We have to pay you up to that point, but we can separate, and those are really important clauses in my mind.
So the deduction from Siemens is an annual figure over the three years?
Correct.
Okay. And, okay, that's enough for now. Thanks.
So seeing the, I'm just going to ask again, because you were kind of saying it, but I just want to make sure we understand it, because that is an extraordinary difference in the, in the price of the service. And so we have, I think what is, was sort of implied or briefly stated was that there have been, it's a different approach to the, to the maintenance and the preventative maintenance of the machinery that has been, we've been sort of getting for what we've been paying for previously, and because of that, we feel that we've had a repair cost above and beyond what we would have where we would, following maintenance, like we're going to now.
Basically, what we're doing is we're paying, if we were to go to the other company, we'd be paying them $7,000 a year to come in clean. If they found something wrong, then they bill us to fix it, and that's like the basic preventative ones. The other two companies, they're going to do the much, the next level to make sure everything's working, fix certain, unless it's catastrophic.
If they find nozzles and stuff like that.
Right, they're going to replace those things.
And they're not going to charge us for...
And they're not going to charge those things.
All of the parts.
It's only if it's a catastrophic item that then they have to come back and charge us. At that point in time, we're probably look at insurance or another item, if it's something large. But where, and I could tell you that the other system was not working. It was, the right level of maintenance was not being done for the, for this.
It was costing us more than the 30,000.
And it was costing us in the long run. There were so many times that we'd have to come in and withdraw from the Capital Reserve Fund, because it was a lot more money, that we'd have to find another budget.
And, oh, I'll let you have the next turn, Counselor Cast.
So I might have missed it, so I'm going to ask a dumb question. Do we have a contract with any entity right now, or is this a new?
Our contract actually expired with Thermal.
Thermal, okay.
Thermal, excuse me. Last, I think it was either October or November, I had to pull the contract to look at it.
Okay.
It was intentionally done as a one-year agreement, because that was one of the things I was asked to look at when I first got here.
And was that a similar...
It was exactly what they proposed, that they would, we would pay them a small amount a year, and if there was something wrong, they would come in and charge us again to fix it.
So we have experience with how that works, and whether that's maybe the best fit.
As I, that's why I'm not recommending that company.
And I know, I know the facilities director has also been promoting that we really should be doing things under the operating budget to do regular maintenance on a more holistic fashion than piecemeal.
The best way to put it is, you've got to take it up to the next level to protect your asset. And when we're not cleaning and maintaining, it's just like if you, if your car's supposed to get its oil changed every 4,000, but you push it to 6,000, there's a, there's a cost in the long run. And unfortunately, we're in that cost in the long run, so these are going to hopefully help strengthen our systems.
I have one more question in that line, just to connect one more dot. So remind me again, where are we with a lot of these systems in terms of replacement or major, you know, some of the major pieces that wouldn't be covered under maintenance and repair?
We have several systems that are very old right now.
Yeah.
And they've been band-aided, so there's going to be some impact at some point.
Okay.
And I'll tell you, it'll be in weeks, not months. Days, not weeks. I've got, I'm going to have an email to you guys shortly about a system, we're just getting everything pulled together.
You are...
Go ahead.
Just like you know the rules, you're supposed to ask one question, and then another counselor asks a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Counselor...
We've done it both.
Thompson?
So on those pieces of equipment that are much older, do we know what part of any of that is covered, like you, 27.5 from Siemens? Or are we assuming that those equipment costs will not be covered?
This will not be covered.
This will not.
It's a significant...
They predate it.
It's predated and it's significant. That would be one of those ones they can't come in and say.
But we will have warranties and things going forward, obviously.
Correct, and we do try to get the extended warranties when available.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What was our, and Steve, I don't know if you have it. What was, what would you say our average annual cost for thermodynamics was, all in?
I don't know what we spent with them last year. I know that we spent fair amount since I've been here getting things fixed.
And last year, we had them in here, hours they were here, a lot, multiple hours, I mean, multiple weeks. And that was because they did not comply with the agreement we had at that point in time with maintenance. And we found issues, and we said, "This is not being fixed on our dime, you must fix this."
Will you go on the record in saying that we did not get the performance from them that we expected and that we did spend more than $27,500?
I will go on the first part. I don't, I don't want to say the number on top. I don't have that in front of me.
I think that's really the number I'm looking for in that, not that I have a problem.
It was, it was in the ballpark. I'm not, because I can't say it's definitely, yeah.
Alright, yeah, I mean, I'm not going to overdo it, $1,000, but it was in the ballpark for the same thing, plus the new system number.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Weinstein.
So, Counsel Cast basically asked my question, and I think that you answered it, and that's just generally what the state of our HVAC systems is currently.
It's not good.
Right, which sounds that way. And so, but along those lines, I guess I'm curious, back to your project that you're working on with the overall assessment of all of the buildings, where are we at with that?
I've done, the majority of the surveys are done, and now it's basically creating the spreadsheets and the data and the cost analysis for that, and that's where I'm at right now. I still, I mentioned to Steve today that my plan is still to deliver a draft report in April.
Good, thank you.
Seeing no further, whoops, it's Cast.
I just want to kind of connect the dots here in my head. So, the systems or the buildings are itemized to some extent in the bids, right?
Correct.
How does that align with the systems or things that we know? I have a short life left.
What I did is I surveyed all the buildings and made an equipment list of all of the building's equipment. The second part that I did is, we're also looking at condition and age. So, for instance, if you have a heating plant that's 25 years or older, it's near its end of its life cycle. So those things are things that are going to be replaced. You still have to maintain it in the meantime to keep it running while you're working on how to replace it. And that's kind of two different things at this point. One's more of a capital investment, one's a preventive maintenance.
This is just to keep it running. The other one is to keep it, it needs to be replaced. We're trying to, we have old systems that need to be kept running. That's what this contract is to do. After this continues on, which you're going to have always, the performance contract that we just agreed with EEI, they're going to come up with a plan to do replacements and do financing of that, and also be energy efficient.
I think what I'm concerned about is that slice, let's say, of things that wouldn't be covered by the contract, but we're going to agree to the contract amount, but then we'll, we'd immediately have to go out and replace?
I don't think there's a-
But they'd fold back into the contract. Once they're replaced, they would come out of this umbrella.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and actually, once we're replaced with new equipment, the cost for maintenance typically goes down, so we would readjust the contract accordingly.
That's, that's what I was trying to get at. It's like when you inventoried everything and you got the bid, they saw the different systems and buildings, right, so.
Right, yeah, no, it'll go down once you get, because you don't have the expense.
Alright, thank you.
Counsel Weinstein.
None of it, thank you.
That answered my question.
Roll call. Counsel Burns.
My question's got answered by more about the difference between thermodynamics costs and the other bids that came in, so, but the other counselors covered those, so thank you.
So you're being called now to phone.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were asking. Alright, so, yeah, aye.
Thank you. Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Thompson.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Bowden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and accept a motion to approve resolution 1718-29, which is authorizing the town to enter into an agreement with Martineau Electric Incorporated for electrical services for town facilities.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 1718-29.
Second.
Just went out to bid, we received for electrical services, we haven't done that in a number of years. We received two proposals back, Daniel Electric of Guilford, who's currently our electrician, and they charge $85 an hour with overtime rate of $85 with material markup of 10%. And Martineau Electric of Dover, an hourly rate of $55 and overtime rate of $82.50, material markup of 15%. Check references on both, they're both stellar, so we'd recommend Martineau.
Bidding at work. Counsel Thompson.
There is a difference in the labor rate, obviously.
There's a considerable difference.
Considerable, but there's also a difference in the materials markup, and it's 5%. That can go up pretty fast depending on the materials that are needed versus the labor, and maybe this is a comment more than a question. We don't know.
Typically, any service-based job is going to be a smaller job to begin with. If we have a larger job, that, we're going to have a fixed contract pricing, so they're going to estimate it before we ever engage in it. So we'll have an idea, we'll know beforehand what the cost will be.
At $55 an hour, what I don't want to all of a sudden see is, you know, $15,000 worth of electrical pipe at 15%.
Yeah.
Our conduit and electrical, hello.
We don't, most of our calls are service-based, so, you know, a little bit of conduit, a little bit of wire.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Cast.
I was looking at the scope of work, and I was just curious, are, so this is for on-call, right? So are there things that the town would do, any of that scope, under some circumstances and just call if?
We don't have licensed electricians.
That's, that was my second part, like whether, well, I didn't know about light, light replace bulbs.
It depends on the size of the bulb. I mean, if it's a small one like this, we can, but if it's a streetlight or something larger like that, we cannot.
Okay, alright, thanks.
And the scope is listed just to say, "This is the things we could be calling you for." I'm not going to call in to replace a light bulb in here.
Understood, I just didn't know what the, how the arrangement would work, since it's primarily for on-call. Whether it was just to backfill what the town couldn't do sometimes, or-
No, we don't have electricians on staff.
Definitely, yeah, okay, understood.
Counsel Weinstein.
So along those lines, at what point would we go out to bid for, you know, other work that might need to be done? Is it, if it's a larger job, how does that process work?
We have ordinances, are there any placed that say we have to have a certain number of bids on a certain dollar value anyways?
But I mean, are you thinking like, say if we had, if we were reconstructing a room at the fire station? We'd probably, yes, this electrician would not, would not be the electrical contractor that would do one bid.
Necessarily.
Right, not necessarily, right.
They would bid on that project.
Right, this is just on-call, smaller things we may need, right.
Okay.
I just had, on page 70, there's for Daniel's, there was a place where it was crossed out, where it says, "Emergency service shall be within four hours." This would have been the old electrical contractor, Daniel's.
So, is it- They did not feel that they can meet that requirement.
Right, and so in a sense then, there is some, some, we're getting improved, potentially improved service because we're dealing with a closer contractor that couldn't meet the four hours, so that is-
I can tell you, I've used them for one project, the new company, to see how they were going to work for us. They responded very quickly.
He's very close.
Yes, it literally, they had, I called them, I couldn't tell you what day of the week, it was Tuesday, and they had it done by Wednesday morning. So it was very happy, yeah.
So that's another advantage. I see no more lights, you can call the roll, I think.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Thompson.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Bowden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
And accept a motion to approve resolution 1718-30, to enter into a two-year contract to provide dispatch services to the town of New Fields, New Hampshire.
So moved.
Second.
It's, we discussed it. We will be receiving $28,000 in the first year. That will go up by the Consumer Price Index, Boston, as soon as after that. The only fiscal impact that the chief believes that will have is $25 a month for a new phone line, but that will be coming out of the revenue that we receive for the $28,000. We already are doing a lot of dispatch for New Fields, because we have, we do run their EMS. So, any EMS calls, we're already receiving those. A lot of the fire calls that were their immediate backup, so we can call for that. And I can tell you that the chiefs of New Fields are also excited about this, to improve communications on their end as well.
Counsel Weinstein.
This is something that we've talked about for the four years that I've been on the council, I think probably prior to that. And so, it's just, I'm really happy to see this moving forward, so that's all I have to say.
Counsel Thompson.
A second, what Counsel Weinstein said, tickled to death that we're finally getting this back. I think we missed them. I think they missed the service. I'm glad they could come to an agreement. My question might be more for Chief Tru and whatever. Because the call volume has gone up so much in our town, I don't know what it's gone up in New Fields. It is a little bit sleepier.
Yeah.
But we are so big, does he think he has enough staff dispatch wise?
Yes, he does.
To handle this, that it's not going to be, because of, like you said, we already do a certain amount, but this is going to be even their regular radio calls, their regular patrols, certain bits like that to some extent.
Yeah.
Is he okay?
He's very confident that we can handle it, there's no question.
Alright.
You know, our discussions were, if we were to look at other communities to bring them in, what do we do at that point?
Well, I think we would need another body and, you know, whatever, but, okay, good, I'm glad this is a good fit.
Well, if it ever got to that point, hopefully we can get further along with our discussions about having to pay Rocky and him for services that they will not allow us to have.
Right.
Still doesn't sit well.
Yeah.
Let's go for two for two.
Try it.
Okay, I have no more lights, please call the roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Thompson.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Bowden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Alright. And, can I read the, yes, page 82.
We've got an appointment, do you want to read it? Resolution 2017-2018-31, entering into a contract electrical installations for water and sewer supervisory control data acquisition, SCADA, systems improvements. Whereas the water system and wastewater pump station SCADA systems are outdated and not supported, and whereas the water and wastewater departments have set aside $50,000 and $105,000 respectfully in their capital reserve funds for SCADA improvements, and whereas electrical installation bid of $32,800 and $101,700 was the lowest bid for water and wastewater SCADA improvements, now therefore be resolved that the New Market Town Council does hereby authorize the town administrator to enter an agreement with electrical installations to perform the water and wastewater department SCADA improvements for the sum of $134,000.
Do you want me to read the next one?
Sure.
I'll take turns. I have one after. Resolution 2017-18-32, withdrawal of water and wastewater department capital reserve funds for water and sewer supervisory control and data acquisition SCADA system improvements. Whereas the water system and wastewater pump station SCADA systems are outdated and not supported, and whereas the water and wastewater departments have set aside $50,000 and $105,000 respectively in their capital reserve funds for the SCADA improvements, and whereas electrical installations bid of $32,800 and $101,700 were the lowest bids for the waste and wastewater SCADA improvements, now therefore be it resolved that the New Market Town Council does hereby approve the withdrawal of $32,800 from the water department capital reserve funds and $101,700 from the wastewater capital reserve funds to perform the water and wastewater SCADA improvements project. Next one's yours.
Resolution 2017-2018-33, an engineering contract for Bennett and Sewell improvements. Whereas the 2011 water system update and capital improvement plan prepared by AECom recommended that the town upgrade the Bennett and Sewell wells, and whereas the water department has been setting monies aside in its capital reserve funds to perform Bennett Sewell well upgrades, and whereas the water department would like to enter an agreement with Underwood engineers to perform the necessary engineering and bidding for the project for the sum of $70,600. Now therefore be resolved by the New Market Town Council does hereby authorize the town administrator to enter an agreement with Underwood engineers to perform the engineering and bidding for the Bennett and Sewell well improvements project for the sum of $70,600.
And finally, resolution 2017-18-34, withdrawal of water department capital reserve funds for Bennett Sewell well improvements project. Whereas the 2011 water system update and capital improvements plan prepared by AECom recommended that the town upgrade the Bennett and Sewell wells, and whereas the water department has set aside $600,000 into its capital reserve fund to perform the Bennett and Sewell well upgrades, and whereas the water department would like to enter into an agreement with Underwood engineers to perform the necessary engineering and bidding for the project for the sum of $70,600, now therefore be it resolved that the New Market Town Council does hereby approve the withdrawal of $70,600 from the water department capital reserve funds to perform the engineering and bidding for the Bennett Sewell improvements project. That's it for resolutions from the first reading. Is there any correspondence to the town council? There is not. And do we have any closing comments by town councilors? Seeing none, the next council meeting is next Wednesday. This meeting we are having now was delayed from last week due to a storm. So our next meeting is February 21st, and with that, we are adjourned.
Oops, I forgot to say bye-bye, you just hit the wrong button.